Three one, quick second, just for the... I'm gonna put up a, the generic version and then change the numbers. Okay, now we've got your numbers on my screen. The velocities you found look good, like even rounding aside, they're within like point oh one percent. So, then it would just be something within part B. You would set up m one v one plus m two v two, no, v one initial, two initial equals m one v one final plus m two v two final. And then separately, since this is an elastic collision, v one initial minus v two initial equals v minus v two. v two final minus v one final. Your masses are two point four or four point eight. Your initial velocities are two nine point two eight, negative nine point two eight. Those are unknown, and then over here, you've got nine point two eight seven minus negative nine point two eight seven. So that's gonna be a bigger positive number, still v two f minus v one f. And simplify down. Two point four times nine point two eight seven, it is two eight seven that you got, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's twenty two, two point two eight repeating, just cut it off with a nine there. Minus four point eight times, well, that ends up being minus because negative, so four. Well, it's really just gonna end up being half, that's my line. Equal to five four. And then this one, nine point two seven minus negative nine point two eight seven, just doubles, so eighteen. Negative, that's important, negative, ten point five seven four equals three two minus v one f.
But it is negative eighteen?
Yes, because it's, well, yes, negative eighteen, because it's always on this side of the elastic equation, v one initial minus v two initials, that'd be a positive minus a negative. Oh, no, it's positive, sorry, brain's still waking up, it's positive, I'm mistaken. That's about as far as that one goes by itself. Back over here, that's just gonna cut down to about negative two point two eight nine. Still equal to this, which I believe you then simplified by sending, dividing both sides by all two point four. Which would end up being negative nine point two eight seven equals v one f plus two times v two f. So, but these are two equations?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, hmm. So, setup seems fine then, so it might just be some algebra or calculator thing on the way to the final answer. I'm gonna turn this into...
Oh wait, I see, for some reason, I put the nine point two um eight seven in the second part, but I have like, if I solve for v one f, I had eleven point one four five instead of nine point two. Cause for some, whenever I was working it out, I changed my two point four to just two.
It does, yeah, it would leave a two behind on this side, but you'd have to take two point four out of this side, which would turn it back into just nine point...
I was, whenever I was doing it, I changed the two point four for the v one to just two point oh v one. And then, and then divided the twenty two by two instead of by two point four.
That would explain, yeah, that might explain why your answer was only slightly off. Okay. So then, with that changed, those should be your two equations. You should be able to, two equations, two unknowns, to slightly more accurate answers. They weren't far off, what you input is very close to what it's expecting, so that small thing likely accounts for it. Does that help for now?
Yes. Any other questions, Ed, on the, on this stuff?
Absolutely. That's, I don't know where to go. All right, ten. So here we've got collision, working it one way elastically and one way inelastically. Any specific part you were hoping to look at? Okay. So, um, we've got one basic setup here. Cart with mass of five kilograms is moving forward on a frictionless horizontal linear track at one point two meters per second. It's going to strike stationary cart of twenty kilograms. I'll say again, my intent is for it to be stationary, but I'm just now realizing I didn't write the word stationary in there. But my goal was for the two, twenty kilograms to start at rest. So its initial velocity is zero in both versions. Part A is working it inelastically if the objects stick together. Part B is looking at it elastically if they instead bounce off of each other. The goal just being to demonstrate the two different types. Inelastically, in an inelastic collision, only momentum is conserved, kinetic energy is not conserved. And that means we can't do conservation of kinetic energy or that third equation, because that's based on conservation of kinetic energy. So, for part A, your only option is to compare total momentum before and after. So, initially, we've got the momentum of cart one. Cart two's initial momentum is just gonna be zero because it's not moving. So this is the total momentum on the initial side, ends up adding up to just five point, five times one point two is six. On the final side, both masses are gonna be moving at a different combined final velocity. As long as they stick together, they will share the same v f, so it's the same variable in both positions. So five times v f plus twenty times the same v f can normally add up together into twenty five v f. As long as they're sticking together, it's basically like they merged into one object. And now they are sharing the entire momentum. So, divide by twenty five, and that will tell you the reduced speed that the new combined object has once it is lumps together, rolling at one, at once, as one, I'm sorry. And so that final answer is point two four meters per second, slowed down by at least, down to like twenty percent. I suppose technically slowed down to twenty five percent. So, they stuck together, they're moving a lot slower, this makes sense. Note that it's in the same direction though. Yeah, I just decided that the initial one point two was a positive number. We've got a positive answer back out, so same direction, just a lot slower. This, I feel, is consistent with what you'd expect. Now, for the elastic version, things get a little bit tricky, because if objects bounce off of each other, they're not gonna have the same v f. You can't guarantee that, in fact, they likely won't. So, looking at the momentum, it's a very similar situation, except they don't share a final velocity anymore. So now we've got two different unknowns right here, meaning we can't just use the one to solve for it. We need a second equation with the same two unknowns in it. Now, for elastic collisions, both momentum and kinetic energy are conserved. I don't have a spare formula sheet, that's weird. On your formula sheet, it mentions that in elastic collisions, both kinetic energy is conserved before and after. And because of that fact, there's also a third equation, v one f minus v, sorry, v one i minus v two i equals v two f minus v one f, which is also true, but that's only true for elastic, yes?
Hold on, how'd you get the equation, how'd you change v f to, to what it is right there? Is that like one point two plus v one f?
This one?
No, no, left side, right there where you're ending it.
Oh, so, what I'm trying to communicate is, since the two v f's are not the same number anymore, we can't treat them as the same thing. And we have to perform what I call two equations, two unknowns, to find something to substitute in for v two f to make this solvable, to make it about v one f instead. And so this second equation, for our two equations, two unknowns... Yes, and I tried to show that with these arrows. Using the second equation, I found another relationship between the two final velocities. Again, this is the third starting point for a collision, applicable only for elastic collisions. It says so on your formula sheet, so make sure to note that. We couldn't use this for the other version, because this only works for elastic. And note again, that the two objects switch positions between the two sides. It's one i minus two i equals two f minus one f, that switch is important. But the same equation has the same two unknown things in it, both final velocities. And this equation says that one point two equals v two f minus v one f. So that's a different relationship, a different equation. I solved that for v two f, which is still a function of v one f. So we don't have an answer yet, but now we have something that we can use instead of v two f. So now if we write this, one point one two plus v one f, instead of this v two f, so this next line down, I simplified the left side to just six. It's five times one point two is six, and twenty times zero is zero, so the whole left side is just six. On the right side, five times v f, v one f is unchanged, but twenty times v two f, we've now written instead of v two f, one point two plus v one f. So now, there's only one unknown left. Elastic equations have the potential to just be longer like this, if you have to go through the two equations, two unknowns route. But once you accomplish this step, there's only one unknown left, so everything from this point on is just algebra and assistance from the distributive property. We need all of the one f's combines together. First step is getting this one out of the parentheses, so I distributed the twenty into the parentheses. So twenty times one point two is twenty four, twenty times v one f is twenty v one f. So now we've got two v f one, yeah, v one f terms on here on the right. They can add together normally into twenty five v one f as per previous version. Now, I've also got this stray twenty four over here. That doesn't have a v one f in it, so it's gotta get sent over to the other side. That would make the left side six minus twenty four, which simplified as negative eighteen. Is that helping so far? Okay. So, that would leave us, once we send the twenty four over and add these two v one f terms together, negative eighteen equals twenty five v one f, divide by twenty five, we solve for v one f, and we now get negative point seven two. Contrast this to the first part, where the objects combine and both roll forwards. Here, the oncoming object is going to turn around, which I would hope that you noticed happening at least once in the collision lab we did, at least a month ago now. I realize, wasn't a month ago? I don't know. So that's one of our final answers, and again, thinking back to lab, if the approaching object is smaller than what it's hitting, it, it seems, it feels consistent with real, what I observe around me, for the smaller incoming objects to get thrown backwards, kinda like if you throw a ball at a wall, it springs back, because it's not really gonna push the bigger object around very much. It's just gonna get reflected. So if that one turns around, that negative is important. And we can then take that v one f and pop it into our second equation to solve for v two f. So, the arrow's meant to represent taking that answer up here. So this equation brought down, brought down here, instead of v one f, we can now put in negative point seven two to give us a final v two f of positive point four eight. Note again the different directions. This situation would look something like this. Which again, for the elastic collision, makes sense, elastic objects tend to bounce off of each other. How's this feel?
I was confused on part B for all the arrows and stuff.
Yeah, sorry, my intent with the arrows is to show equations or answers being plugged into various places. Also a scanner I used, for some reason it didn't pick up on the arrows very well, sort of faint. Any other thoughts or concerns about this one? Okay. What else is on your minds?
In number nine, does the point five in part A come from the two twenty five centimeters added together?
No, this point five actually comes from the flagpole's center of mass being located halfway down its length. Literally its midpoint, the center.
So it's just point five because it's halfway, not because it's...
Yes, and it's not point two five plus point two five, it's technically the one meter flagpole cut in half. Cause its center of mass is in its center, which is true of most uniform objects. And the pole by itself, its own weight does generate torque if the hinge is on one of its ends. Like if you just pulled a pencil or something like this, its own weight does generate torque and it does spin. It only, like, the mass of the object only doesn't generate torque if it is being balanced on its center of mass. So if you build a seesaw like this, the weight of the object doesn't matter. But if you do it like this, its mass and weight does matter.
So where does the one come from on the next one?
So, this, just to reiterate, this term right here is the torque caused by, I didn't actually write the formula by itself here, I'm suddenly annoyed at myself about that. Torque equals radius perpendicular times force. And what I'm doing in each of these parts is finding the net torque in various directions, which is literally just multiple torques added together. So, question A asks, how much torque do the sign and the mass of the pole itself create? So, my goal here is I'm adding together the two torques that they're generating. This is the radius from the hinge to the pole's center of mass times the weight of the pole itself. This is supposed to be ten times nine point eight. My handwriting appears to be... Do it around so it's easier to see. Ten times nine point eight. So that's, again, in reference to this formula. The radius from the hinge to the pole's center of mass times the weight of the pole, its weight is gonna be its mass times nine point eight. So that first term is the torque generated by the flagpole itself, if the hinge is here and its center of mass is halfway along its one meter length. The second term, one, radius of one meter, cause that's the distance from the hinge to the end of the pole where this sign is being hung. Radius of one meter times the weight of the sign, it's fifteen kilogram mass times my weight. So those are the two things generating clockwise torque. They are both working together to try to bring the sign down. If that rope wasn't there, those two torques would cause the object to physically spin down and probably hit the door of the building.
J's impulse, right?
Yes, lowercase j is impulse. I use it for impulse at least. Yes.
Can we do, can we do number six?
On this? Yes. Does that address your question right now on this one? All right. All right. For number six, we have a spinning merry-go-round. My intent in writing this question is we are examining the merry-go-round while it is moving at a constant speed of fifteen rotations per minute. So, the ride's been started, it's currently running. This is the speed it is consistently running at until it eventually stops. Right now, we're just looking at it running at a constant speed. It spins at fifteen rotations per minute, there's two kids sitting on it, each a slightly different radius from the center. So, as seen from above, one merry-go-round, kid one is on, you know, a horse here. And kid two is on a horse at a slightly farther out position. Cause the bigger the, bigger the merry-go-round is usually like an inner lane and outer lane, in my experience. And based on that rotational speed and the two different radii, you've been asked to find different pieces of information for each respective child. First is find the linear velocity of each child. And that linear speed, what it's asking is, if the kids let go and took off in straight lines, what speeds would those be? Like if they had an internal speedometer telling them, what speed are you trying to move at in a straight line if you weren't holding onto this horse right now? What speed would that be? And my intent, what feels simplest to do here for me is to use this translational formula to convert their angular speeds into linear speeds. And the linear speed you get is gonna depend on the radius, the individual child's radius from the center. If you are sitting further out, like, the two kids have the same rotational speed, because they're on the same ride. They're going through the same number of rotations per minute. But the further out they sit, the more linear distance they cover. Like the circumference of the circle changes sizes if the radius changes size. So they'll have different linear speeds, because they're covering different amounts of linear distance per rotation. So, this formula exists to convert angular speed into linear speed. All you need to know is the radius of a circle, and you know the radius each kid sits at. The only catch is, I gave you angular speed in rotations per minute, and ideally we would use it in radians per second. So, the first thing I actually did was convert fifteen rot per minute into one point five seven rad per second. Just to put it into the unit would be like, you know, like converting miles per hour into a second. And putting that shared angular speed into this formula with the two different radii gives you two slightly different linear speeds for the two kids. Again, if they let go and rocket off in a straight line, those would be the speeds they are ejected at. Feel good so far? All right. Part B differently asks, find the centripetal acceleration of each child. The centripetal acceleration tells us how much their direction is changing every single second, helps correlate to the centripetal force that is holding them in the circle. Just for context, if you're on a merry-go-round like this, again, like the horses, they usually have something for you to hold onto, and the force causing the centripetal acceleration would actually be the force that you are using to hold onto the ride. There's some real force, I'll just play that part. So, centripetal acceleration is A C. There's actually two different formulas for it, depending on, you know, the context of what information you have or want. We've been using A C equals v squared over r pretty frequently, but in this context, we actually know angular speed as well as linear speed, because after part A, you actually know the linear speed of each kid. So you could use either, as long as you do part A first. So really just have to pick one and input the correct information. I went with the omega version, just cause it has the same shared number here. And once again, it gives you two slightly different centripetal accelerations. It'll take different amounts of force to hold each kid onto the ride based on their distance from the center. And again, centripetal acceleration kinda represents the degree to which your linear speed is changing with time, or rather, the direction of your linear velocity is changing with time. Cause like, the outermost kid here always wants to rocket off in a straight line tangent to the circle, and that vector keeps changing direction. And so that's what the A C represents, the direction changing every moment. Part B, you feel okay? All right, so now part C, which is almost a trick question. My intent is for the ride to be moving at constant rotational speed. So that means that the number of rotations per second isn't changing. Therefore, the number of radians per second isn't changing. And that would make the angular acceleration of the whole ride and both children zero if their angular speed is not changing. Their ro, their rate of rotation remains constant. And I can demonstrate that mathematically as well. The formula for angular acceleration, which is different from linear and centripetal, alpha equals delta omega over delta t. Delta omega is change in angular velocity, and I never described at any point the angular velocity changing. So, if it's just constant, if it's the same initial and the same final, the change is zero. Therefore, there's no angular acceleration. There is a centripetal acceleration, because their linear speed keeps changing direction. But there's not an angular acceleration, because their rotational motion remains constant. So it's kind of an interesting pair. You are accelerating in one dimension, but you're not in the other. How's that feel? Any thoughts or concerns on this one? All right. What else on your minds? Yeah?
Can we just do number sevens?
Seventy seven?
Yeah.
All right, so, this is an impulse question. And this is just the physics of what happens in baseball. Hundred forty gram baseball is thrown at thirty meters per second towards the batter, note the direction there. I'm gonna try to give a picture for this. Because the directions end up being important on the velocity vectors here. This is technically a collision, so I'll list the before and the after. Before, thirty meters per second, I'm gonna draw it to the right. And the batter is going to physically swi, like, wait to swing the baseball bat. So here's our before, note again the direction. The after state, we have an impact, it lasts point oh two seconds, and now the ball is moving at forty-five meters per second in the opposite direction. Which, I didn't play much baseball as a kid, but I believe the intent is always to not get back where it came from, if not over and past that. So the idea is, direction changes as well as the number, and that's important. So the question is, first question actually, there's two in there. One, what is the impulse of the ball? And then, how much force was required to cause that impulse? Impulse is defined as the change in momentum. So J equals delta rho. And there's two ways, two additional things that it happens to be equal to. J equals change in momentum. Change in momentum is often caused by a mass's velocity changing. And likewise, this is caused by force acting on the ball for a certain amount of time. So all of this together, I feel kind of just is the multi-part definition and explanation of what impulse is. And we're gonna use pretty much every part of this. The first question is, what is the impulse on the ball? So if we want J, there's three different ways to describe it. We know it is change in momentum, but we don't know the change yet. We know the mass of the ball and we know its final and initial velocities. So this is what I would use to find impulse first. We're gonna use this later on once we already know impulse. So to start with, I'd recommend m times delta b. The mass of the ball remains consistent at a hundred and forty grams, but we like kilograms, so I convert that into point one four zero. And then, delta b, change in velocity. Now recall that delta anything is always final minus initial. So I'll write that in first. Velocity final minus velocity initial. So the final is the forty-five and the initial is the thirty. So we wanna input them in that correct order, and then we're good, right? Now, what's the problem? Change the sign because the direction changed. That thirty points one way and the forty-five points the other way. You can, doesn't really matter which one is negative as long as one of them's negative. And since we usually make right to be positive, I'm gonna make the forty-five negative to indicate that it again is pointing opposite of the thirty. And so rather than the delta b being fifteen, the delta b ends up being negative seventy-five. Because the batter had to exert enough force to take away thirty meters per second forward and replace it with forty-five meters per second backward. So again, change of seventy, change of magnitude of seventy-five. And that is where the negative ten point five comes from. That's this mass times the negative seventy-five instead of a negative fifteen. And the units on that answer are the same as the units for momentum since impulse is just change in momentum. So that's kilograms meters per second. So that's the first part. Feel good? All right. Second part asks, with what force did the batter hit the ball? All collisions last a certain amount of time. Baseball impacts tend to happen pretty fast, so just point oh two seconds. And it took a certain amount of force to make this happen. Since we know that impulse, we can figure out the force as long as we know how long it was acting for. That's because force causes acceleration and acceleration applied for a certain amount of time changes velocity. So that's where the force comes into this, force causes change in velocity. So you use the impulse found for part A, use the time of the collision, and that is where, I'll show actually my steps. We divide by point oh two, so ten point five, negative ten point five, the negative is more, over point oh two is the force. Just divided that over. And the final answer would be negative five hundred and twenty-five newtons. The negative just meaning that it points in the same direction as the impulse of the change in velocity, which we decided negative is rightward, so the force points to the right. Same direction the ball is now sailing in. And that's a pretty good amount of force. Baseball dancer. How's that feel?
For the test, what was the first chapter we began with? Was it with the seven?
Six. This test is on six through nine, and chapter six was momentum in collisions. Actually, I'll show bright space real quick. That's the wrong tab. There we go. All right, so within, of course, bright space page, test two tab, chapters six through nine. If you click on this itself, it'll show you a list of things we covered that you should expect to be on test. Chapter six was momentum in collisions. But I also included kinetic energy from the last test on that list because it does come up in chapter six. So basically, from, right after test one, we did chapter six on momentum in collisions, followed by seven and eight, which were both rotation, and then nine last week, which was pressure and buoyancy. So all of that will be on test two. And all of that is on this list. So I wrote this to kind of act like a studying checklist, basically. Does that help? Any other things on your minds right now, guys?
Can we do like a balance beam question? I remember you saying.
Yeah, let me try to find one that is not like additional one, that isn't just the one on practice test. Must have one with it somewhere. All right, and it's gonna take me too much time to find one, so let's make one. Okay. So we've got a, let's say, two meter long seesaw. And the fulcrum of this seesaw is not directly under its center. This is the center of the seesaw. The fulcrum is not directly under it. That's a situation like the flagpole where the mass of the object is now going to generate torque. It is not going to be level by itself. We want it to be level, and so we need to figure out where on the other side, well, hold on. Writing examples on the fly, I always have to think out the reality of the situation, unfortunately. I'm trying to create the narrative. We want this thing to be level, we don't know its mass, and so we experimentally figure out that if we place a twenty kilogram box one meter from the fulcrum, now it is level. So on this side, one meter away from the fulcrum, you have a twenty kilogram box. There is nothing on the other side. So it looks something like this. Well, actually, something like this. Where, you know, my hand is just the object. So physically, tell me what's happening here? Why is it level with no object sitting on the other side?
Because you're holding it at center of balance?
I'm actually not holding it by its center of balance, by its center of mass. Its center of mass would be somewhere around here, halfway down its length.
Is it a force you're putting on one end?
I am putting force on one end. But that is being counteracted by its own weight on the other side. Because since the fulcrum is not under its center of mass, its own weight is now generating torque. So if I just leave it alone right here, it falls. So right now, the torque this thing makes is being opposed by the torque that the balance beam's own weight is creating since the fulcrum is not under its center. So my question is, given that this is currently balanced the way that it is, what must the mass of the balance beam be? Because thing is currently level, what must the net torque on it be in this moment?
It'd be zero?
Zero, exactly. If it is level right now, balanced, not spinning at all, net torque must be zero. And that tells us that all of the counterclockwise torques are equal to and canceling out with the clockwise torques. So the torques from both sides equal out and cancel out. They have to so that they add up to zero. On the left side, the thing making torque is going to be the mass of the beam itself. So this is the torque formula. Torque equals radius times force. This is the distance from the fulcrum to the center of the physical object. Because it's centered up, every uniform object, its center of mass is going to be dead center. Humans aren't uniform objects because we have limbs and stuff. But this is just a plank of wood. It's uniform, its center of mass is literally dead center. So the distance between that center and the fulcrum is twenty-five centimeters. So for radius, I'm putting in point two-five. The force supplied there will be the weight of its, of the object itself, its mass times nine point eight. On the other side, we've got a radius of one meter between the fulcrum and that twenty kilogram box. So radius of one and the weight of twenty kilograms would be twenty times nine point eight. Note that the nine point eights just kind of cancel out, which would include any negative signs that you do or don't include. So m point two-five times m equals twenty, that's one times twenty, that's twenty, the nine point eights just go away. m equals twenty over point two-five, which is eighty kilograms?
What mass is that?
That is the mass of the balance beam itself, a physical object. If that fulcrum was under its center, that mass wouldn't matter. Because then the radius from that mass and the fulcrum is zero and it generates no torque. But if the fulcrum isn't under the center of mass, it's gonna generate torque and fall over unless we balance it out with something else. Feel helpful? All right. Know if you guys need anything or have any questions before this afternoon? And see you soon. If you guys can come on in, it's just a study session.